I apologize, guys. Danny David here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Well, see.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Yeah.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda commissioners? Any free public comment? Is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? No? And um, free public comment? Is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Item four fiscal year 2024 budget draft.
Hey, just to root off of the bad news, if you haven't read your emails, we did receive notice from Gladwin County this afternoon that they are no longer considering sending their inmates to Ogumaw. So what that means for us is we are now solidly in the alternative plan mode in terms of what we where we are with our budget. We do have a call scheduled on Friday with the Department of Corrections, so be myself, the sheriff, possibly the undersheriff and the jail lieutenant will participate in that call. We'll start talking about options that are available to us. Now, this option or this alternate plan that I presented to you would suggest that we really just shut down about half the beds that we have available in the jail. I understand just through conversation that we've had at this table that the Department of Corrections may or may not be supportive of that. They have other rules and things that they want us to abide by, which is certainly understandable, but we'll have that conversation with them on Friday. If, for whatever reason, they say you cannot reduce the beds and reduce the staff, then we're going to have a completely different conversation, and that's one about potentially sending our inmates, all of them, to other locations and just operate a holding facility. Haven't crunched any numbers on that to know what that would look like. I do know the undersheriff has reached out and continues to reach out to other facilities to check on availability. In the meantime, the department is also aggressively contacting other counties to see if they have any inmates that they need to have housed. I don't know, they're not optimistic that we would come up with enough to house to continue the full staffing level that we have. But that activity is at least going on at this point. I was asked to come up with, first, any questions on on that situation?
So right now, we're just waiting to see what develops from that conversation that takes place this Friday.
If that conversation and Vice Chair and I were talking about before the meeting, I will be taking very good notes and will communicate with you after the call to let you know what we learned. At that point, though, I then get back into the larger spreadsheets with the budget and start plugging in some of these reductions that we've talked about. But you've got the formula here, and this is exactly what I'm going to do. You'll just see it in line item detail in the spreadsheets. The paper I handed out tonight, and it's also on the iPads if you need to reference it later. So effectively, look at the requirement incentives and cross some of those out. So the way this spreadsheet works, those two rows on top, on the very top, are broken out into the general fund and the special funds. Broke them out that way because obviously the general fund is a focus of a lot of our conversation, but if we do offer any kind of early retirement or just a retirement incentive, we have to offer it to everybody. So I've broken out the both of the lines. The top two are the current staffing level and what those expenses are. So for instance, in the general fund for the 16 employees who would be eligible for retirement in one form or another, the total wages is $911,157. If we did a retirement incentive, and I'll talk about the assumptions in a second. So if we came up with a scenario where all 16 of those employees retired, that number would be reduced to $849,264 for an actual savings in the wage area of $61,893. That same math works across all these columns. So if you go over to the MERS defined contribution, $24,579 currently. If we went to a retirement incentive, any new employee coming in would be eligible now for that DC plan. This assumes every employee would then opt for the 7% matching to their defined contribution option, which would actually result in an increase in cost of $58,188. Now, why is that? Well, we would be losing several DB employees as well. So employees coming in now would go to the DC where we wouldn't have had employees before. So that cost actually goes up both in the general fund and in the special funds. Over on the DB column, just to point out that if all of these employees took the retirement, we would actually end up paying more in the general fund or the DB plan, roughly $20,932 more. That's because MERS doesn't reduce your cost because somebody retires. They want that five and a half percent or seven and a half percent added to what we would owe. So it would literally be an added cost when those employees retire. So the bottom line is this, if the if some kind of incentive was offered, it's a bit risky. We could, in the general fund, potentially save $78,082 if all of these employees took retirement. But we could also end up paying $143,745 more, depending primarily on which health insurance plan those new employees opted into. So it is risky, and you can see similar type numbers for the special funds. Now, again, some of these assumptions, this first of all is that every employee who was eligible actually retired. I don't think that's going to happen either, but this at least gives you an idea of what the kind of potential savings or additional expense we would have. I mentioned the 7% matching. When you do a retirement incentive, typically the incentive part includes something that costs money. Do you offer a cash payment as incentive? Do you offer to continue health insurance for some time after the actual retirement? Those things would cost money. There is no additional cost programmed into these numbers, and I couldn't even begin to suggest what that so-called incentive might be. And finally, I want to point out that this also assumes that all MERS divisions are eligible for early retirement and open an early retirement window. There are rules, I don't know if that's ever been offered here before, but there has to be a certain buffer between times when it's offered. But that being said, 22 of the 27 employees listed here are eligible to retire now. Only five would need that window open to retire roughly a year early. That's the bottom line of that. Frankly, my opinion, this would just be too risky at this stage to do. But as I said, most of these employees, 22 of the 27 identified, could retire now regardless. The other five will be eligible within a year. So I don't know that there's anything that you could offer outside of some gross amount of money that would entice anybody to retire.
Questions, commissioners, comments?
I look at the same, maybe miniscule. And then be if everybody retired. Drop in the bucket.
They looked at us, we looked at a few years back, and you found out they couldn't provide healthcare if they weren't working here. So then, when you talk about compensating for the same amount, then withholding comes into play. So then you're increasing to combat the withholding. It just, it didn't didn't pan. Kind of looks that way here, too.
Well, my experience where this has been offered with former employers, you really only get maybe a half a dozen at most.
Right, it's a voluntary thing to start with.
Yeah.
Commissioner, let's see.
I don't see anything here, I think we need to move on from this one.
Okay. Commissioner Mahew, anything?
Yeah.
I think we're going to talk about the tax revolving fund. It's in an email on that, correct?
We do, the treasurer is here and can walk through it. There have been just some questions that have been asked off and on, both at the table and one-on-one, about how the tax revolving fund works, how much is in it, what's available for use and so on. And Karen's done a great job of outlining that, and we actually updated that this afternoon to include some additional information.
Can you come on up? Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Yes, around the table.
So on your iPads, there is information about the history for some of you newer commissioners who are not familiar with this fund and why it was established and how it works, if you had a chance to look through the history part of it. Um, Ogumaw County is self-funded, referred to as a self-funded county. That means that the revolving fund dollars are utilized to purchase the delinquent tax rolls from the townships in the spring. In the summer and when our tax collection is finished, we purchase the delinquent tax rolls from those units. When I say purchase, what I mean is we pay the townships for all of the delinquent taxes. We assume that that collection and make all of the millages whole. The county benefits from that because we charge a 4% admin fee plus 1% per month for all the delinquent taxes. Interest compounds each month by 1%. Being self-funded removes the burden of bond agent fees and interest when you borrow to pay those taxes. So this is a savings for the county being self-funded. When you look at the spreadsheet, the summary sheet that I had placed on the iPads, it shows you fund balance and cash balance. For those of you that are not familiar with fund balance, let me explain what that means. That's an accounting term that explains the difference between assets and liabilities. In your assets, you have cash receivables and fixed assets. So when you look at, look at a balance sheet and you look to the bottom and you say, well, what's our fund balance? You have to take that receivable and fixed asset into consideration. Those items are not spendable dollars. So if you looked at the balance sheets, I highlighted for you what the ending fund balance was for each of the tax funds, the active ones and the revolving fund or umbrella fund. But if you take into account the fixed assets and the receivables, your actual spendable money is 4.4 million. Delinquent taxes have to be paid out of that fund in the spring. So if you have 4.4 million, and I'm estimating next year's tax roll to be a delinquent of 3.5, and I'm praying it's only 3.5, this economy is the worst we've seen in 40 years. Normally, when we do a delinquent tax mailing, it spurs a lot of activity for our treasurer's office. I sent out about 3,000 pieces of delinquent tax mail the Thursday prior to Labor Day. It hasn't spurred any activity. That means the people that are out there who are already delinquent don't have the money to pay those delinquent taxes. They're not even calling us to ask questions about it. That's a very bad sign that we are going to have a higher delinquency in the spring. So if you take the difference between the 4.4 million and the three and a half that I'm estimating we're going to need, that only leaves you about $966,000 accessible, spendable revolving fund dollars. Now, the revolving fund should be reserved to maintain our self-funding status. We should use that to guard against the revenue and cash flow instability that this county experiences. You know that because I tell you about negative cash every month. It should also be reserved for unexpected capital expenses that occur. I recommend that the board review our reserves policy that Tim established when he came on board to ensure that that policy safeguards the longevity of this county being self-funded, and I would discourage you from utilizing any of these funds to balance your activity that we were working on for the 2324 fiscal year. I also want to bring to your attention that under the best practice recommendations, a minimum unrestricted fund balance for your general fund, the recommendation is no less than two months of revenue or your anticipated expenses. And right now, your general fund fund balance is a negative. Let me say that again, it is negative $61,017. And then, of course, you know, I've preached you every month about your negative cash. So not only do you have a million dollar deficit right now, you have negative cash and you have a negative fund balance. This is a very, very serious situation, and that's why you heard me say a few meetings ago, this is the worst we've ever seen. Negative cash, negative fund balance. And you should not utilize the revolving fund, and in no time, your ARPA dollars are going to be gone. So I'm sorry that this sport is faced with such dire situation financially, but you have the toughest decisions this county has ever had to make.
Questions for the treasurer?
I really appreciate you putting that together explanation tonight.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, since I've been on, when I came on, we were tapping off it big time. And we need, we needed to get off of it. It's a bad habit. It's really easy to tap into it. But it's not there for that. Everybody, everybody charges taxes, but the county taxes people, and we receive the money. We receive all these millages and stuff. Then they have to be paid out there. Everybody will, not everybody pays their taxes as right away. So this, this money is that reserve so that we can go ahead and write checks to the townships and to the, to everybody that gets a millage. And then hopefully, people will pay taxes then, you know. These 20, 21, 22 taxes there. You know, we're still owed money from those, from those years. People haven't paid us yet.
Yes, if you look at the balance sheet, you'll see the receivable balance
Yeah.
on those balance sheets for the, for the active tax years of the unpaid taxes.
With your township, if your township had to wait three years for tax money to come in, they wouldn't be able to operate.
So we make them whole.
We make them all with this account.
And we're, and we're wanting to do that. It will be.
And then like Tim has explained this Fox lawsuit that happened just a few years ago.
I just had an update on that this morning.
Did you?
I did. Dykema is going to be filing a petition to have the additional counties removed from the class action that was put on stay, and they're looking to make it to be the Fox case only against Gresham County.
That's a nice.
But
fingers crossed. That was the update this morning.
But it could set up for legislature to make a change on how the, what goes into revolving fund.
Well, this isn't, that's not revolving fund dollars, that's the tax reversion. Sale proceeds to tax diversion.
Legislature actually did pass something shortly after all this started and plugged that hole, so to speak, with the legislation.
Michigan is actually in the lead on that legislation.
I hate to be the voice of doom and gloom, but in hearing just told you is very accurate, the whole class action thing is pretty much, it's going to be a Gresham County case. However, there are attorneys who are already looking for petitioners for each county. So it's, it's not going to necessarily go away, but at least it will be only an Ogumaw County case shouldn't be faced with it. It's something I think is a lot more manageable than this class action that was 60-plus counties that were included in there.
Right. And we currently only have one case pending, I go to court the end of this month. We're looking at a potential $38,000 payout, but it depends on what the judge decides.
Questions? Mr. Mahew, do you have anything? Anything else for the treasurer? Thanks, Karen. Sheriff, undersheriff, do you have any ideas, any thoughts, anything you'd like to share with us? Come on up. You do.
Basically, we got to wait until our conversation Friday to see exactly what the DOC. We gotta go down that road before we, we're putting numbers together. If we in fact have to close that, we're putting numbers down and see what it will cost to do that.
To do.
To close it. If we have to go down that road, so. We're putting things together. But we need that conversation Friday with DOC before we move on anything, see what, see what they suggest, what we can do.
Under sheriff?
It kind of mirrors that, you know, Friday, we set up that conversation with MDLC to start that conversation. We've still got feelers out, see if there are other counties that are in a position where they need housing for our bed, our beds that are currently in there. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of the same things with the changes in laws, and we're not seeing the same levels of incarceration that we did back prior to COVID and that type of thing. So we've got the feelers out, but we don't have any solid at this point. Gresham was discussed, it doesn't look promising. So we've got the feelers out, but we don't have anybody to replace it currently with JNC. As part of that discussion with Friday on MDLC, I have started the process as far as options for outhousing and that type of thing, and what's the type of cost. You know, I'll do something in a spreadsheet that's similar to what Karen did with that, as far as some of those costs associated with that as it starts to build. But I can say that a lot of the numbers that Tom presented initially are, would be about ballpark of where you start at the foundation of how much it would cost to house out. The MDLC downsizing to the 85, we just won't have answers to until we actually have that conversation on Friday and see what they say about that. So we're just going to keep pushing to see if we come up with a revenue stream that's going to address that type of stuff. We're also trying to put numbers to the other options that are being discussed, so realistic numbers of what the savings will be, what the real is and is going to be. So obviously Ross Commons, our first stop, my first calls, making some of the changes going, so I'll continue conversation with Ross Commons, see where that gets us in this whole grand scheme of things. I wish I had something magic.
Hopeful, hopeful that we are able to maybe downsize and see what those savings are able to bring to us. I'd really hate to see that place closed. Or now we're in trouble. Commissioner Simmons?
That's one of our biggest biggest bills to the county, you know. It seems like legal is always bigger, the judges, the courts, jail, the sheriff. How many inmates from Ogumaw to Miles County usually have?
Somewhere.
Educated, yes.
Well, the ADPs are in the 70s right now, so that ADP is your average daily population. So the number that we're using for Ogumaw County inmates is 50-ish. Yeah, 50 is kind of the given number that are specifically ours in Ogumaw County. So when you're going out and looking at different options, is that 50? That would be our responsibility.
Do we have any others than, rather than our school to call you in our jail right now?
High schoolers is currently the only ones, we don't have any specials, but we do have two. We've got two specials for various reasons, whether it's problem children or.
Right.
So.
How many Ask or inmates do we have right now?
So they make up the difference between that, that 50 number to the 70, 71 ADP. So that's their 20 to 25 average. We're looking at revenue, I just looked at, it's 320-some thousand for Ask or to just their bedding for bringing their bodies in the base price. It doesn't include the medical and all of that. But that contract was 320, I believe, the numbers.
Plus the commissary they bring in.
Yeah.
The commissary, that's the big one right there.
The way they got Neil right here.
Commissioner Mahew, did you have, you were going to say something?
How many people work at your jail? How many people we employ?
Do you have that answer, somebody that should?
Well, which one do I? I brought this thing so I could answer questions like that. I know I have 54 home employees across the board, which includes animal control and all the staff of both the sheriff's office and jail. That's all the part-timers, too, so that's your seasonal. So as far as no overtime and the employees that I process through for payroll, it's 54 employees.
That's like for ORV, that's everybody.
That's everybody.
Support, everybody's, you've got 54?
54.
I think I'm showing 22 for the jail.
On the budget lines.
Yeah. Appropriations.
Do you have that?
We allocate to that.
There's two, four, six, eight. 20.
I'm not saying 20.
20 and then me up front and.
So 22? Full-time, full-time or is?
Yeah. 23.
The cooks are full-time and their breakfast officer. Plus the transport.
They're part-time.
Right, yeah, total.
You have 23 commissioners? Scott?
Yeah.
I said 22.
17, 17, five sergeants, it's 22, and a lieutenant, it's 23.
Oh, there was 23, rather than sergeant. Sorry. They used to be me and lieutenant.
You're okay.
The street of assistance.
It's 22 plus you plus Nicole.
No, no, that's, that's 23 altogether.
23 altogether, lieutenant, secretary, full-time.
Technically, there is one opening, but we have a vacancy in the sergeant.
Is your position Ben fill? Is that what you were previously?
Staff sergeant.
So there's a vacancy in the sergeant position, then we're in the finalizing stages of looking at promotion.
But I got the bodies already there, you know, they're already working. They're just training.
Questions, do you have anything, Mr. Howard, to add to this?
Not at this time, we'll wait till Friday until I
That's going to be, I, I, I know you said, is that going to be by telephone, televisit, is he coming?
That's what conference call, yeah.
And you guys, law enforcement's going to be there or no?
Right now, it's just at the staff level.
Questions for anyone, guys? I don't think until we know what we can even do, I mean, I don't foresee where the conversation can lead.
So even if this goes through, maybe we should have had hiring freezes before, maybe we should, someone release, maybe don't replace them, they just have to work a little harder, work a little faster.
So.
Push comes to shove, I mean.
You mean between now and we approve this budget?
Yeah.
Do you want to hire any free?
Well, how about not all the way to freeze, but needs or approval for any hires?
I go for that because sometimes it may be an essential, one that has to be filled.
We just got something on family medical leave act, I see it came through, I don't remember where that was through, but she's someone's off for a bit.
57 total employees, correction. Not including myself and the sheriff.
So 59.
59, if you include the two of us.
You guys are.
That's part, well, I'm just looking at overtime, so as far as for the no-time payroll, it's 56, 57 employees. The sheriff's office, animal control, jail, part-time transport, and all the part-time. About all of those upon hours, some of the part-time seasonals are only working occasionally, but that is the total number of part-time staff between the three entities, the jail, the sheriff's office, and the control.
How about just full-time? We got 23 already counted for in the, in the, in the corrections. So how many full-time? For all the different divisions you're looking at there. Other than corrections, we counted out 23.
Yeah, we got sheriff, undersheriff, two lieutenants, and a secretary, full-time, that's, that's the 301 budget. And your 259 budget is one sergeant and the remaining deputies, so that's 13.
13, I got 11 road depths, two SROs.
Two SROs.
Two command, secretary, and then all the you got the road patrol grant position.
Yeah, those two, two vehicles, if I read that correctly, those two vehicles that are on for tomorrow are on, are on a budget item for this, budget line for this. Are on, are on a budget item for this, budget line for this upcoming budget, correct?
They are in the three oh one budget, it was suggested at the last committee, the whole meeting that we somehow maneuvered to put that over in fifty-nine. Um, frankly, where I am, it's. Six one half, doesn't, doesn't matter which piece for, but right now there's funds proposed in three oh one to cover that.
But if we, if we didn't get that, we decided not to. Then that sixty-five thousand dollars goes where the general fund?
Yeah, I mean, it just would be.
One sixty-five thousand.
I agree, that's what I was, I would think it would go back in the general fund. But that, but that's how I thought I read that. Any other questions? Comments, guys? Thank, did you have something, Commissioner Scott?
Oh, that's it. Well, while he's looking at that, I'll make a comment. Um, so, obviously, you know, I've really been pushing the fact that we need some more time and, you know. This abrupt email that we received, Big Gladen County is a huge kick to the gut. So I know there's some real, real hard decisions we, we need to make here. Really didn't. See facing this, um, at this, at this point, but, uh. You know, I mean, Karen brings up some real good, good points with that tax evolving fund, and I understand. Um, the reason for that and the reason why we've been trying to lean away from that. Um, I'm not saying that, I'm not an opponent of. Even some of that money, but even some of that isn't gonna fix our, our problems, I mean, we can't continue to kick this can down the road. These are extremely hard, hard decisions that we are facing that we have to make. One thing that I do wanna say, um. And you guys know that I've all, I've been a big supporter of law enforcement. Um, and you know, this day and age, and Sheriff has said it a few times, and we all know with, you know, mental health. And it just seems like this mental health issue just keeps getting worse and worse. And there are a lot of things that we don't know about in this drug situation with fentanyl and methanol continues to be a problem. And they use our county as a, as an area where they think they can hide. So, not to get too long-winded, but what I'm saying is, um, I met with command post. Um, Jeff Short, Cooper Short, the other day, so I just kinda wanted to see. You know, where they're at right now with patrolling our county, so they're, they have a four-county area between Ogumah. Iasco, Aronak, and Gladen. Twenty-four hours a day, seven-day service, they have like an A, A, A and a B shifts. And that's four, four troopers a day that are basically just admitted to the road. And that's if there's, no one's on vacation, if no one's sick, if no one's on family leave. If someone's pregnant or their wife's pregnant, they get three months off, so I mean, there's times where they have two, two officers on four counties. So, so what I'm getting at is, you know, public safety is important. I think more and more, sadly, each year, things get more dangerous. And I, I just think we all need to know that, you know, we need to have, we need to have that public safety aspect. And that's why I wanted to meet with the state police to find out, you know, what type of support we're getting from them. And we're not, we're not getting a lot, at nighttime, we're getting a little bit more, but Iasco County, they're putting a lot of support over there, cuz they only have. Two sheriff deputies on road patrol over there. So we're not getting much support. And it's just something that we need to all know and think about, cuz again, um. Public safety is important, it's a big part of. You know, obviously, every day, you know, we, one of our goals is to try to keep everyone safe, so. We just gotta keep in mind, you know, what we have out there to protect us on a daily basis. I just wanted to share that.
I have a comment.
Can I share something else?
I agree with you a hundred percent, now if you could just tell us how we're gonna get the money to pay for all that.
We have the road millage, I mean, that.
No, we do have that, but I'm talking about the other stuff that we're talking about now. You know, like the jail and stuff like that. Um, hiring freezes, stuff like that, I don't know where else to go.
I think we're getting there, I, I.
Yeah, we're looking at the big. It's come down now, we have, we're looking at the big money items. And can we reduce the big money item to maybe half of what it is? And still have it, just not as much of it. You know.
But as far as road patrol goes, that, that millage is there, the, the public voted and, and.
That's true.
They wanted it, so that is, that is.
All I'm saying is, you know, what our county has for coverage and I think the importance of, of our road patrol and our. Public safety, I was saying.
Commissioner Scott, did you?
Well, I was just looking at numbers, uh, I think ten deputies is what I see, plus, plus secondary. Yeah.
So would you kind of count?
Full-time, I'm counting full-time. Full-time, if you're looking at full staff from sheriff on down seventeen. That's two school resource officers.
Well, I kinda counted them out cuz they're special funded. So I was looking at general funded.
The general fund, so you've got.
I mean, it's a kind of a general fund account, but it's, it's got a revenue stream coming for it. I'd like to say that the county road guy is the same way, except that, that, that stream is only half. If we said he could work six months, then. We, we could call him fully funded.
Eleven, eleven what?
Eleven under the millage.
Okay.
You have a lot in positions under the millage.
Yeah.
You have two school resource officers, yep.
It's all right.
For road patrol. Two school resource officers that we receive compensation for. And you know, the lieutenants, the sheriff, undersheriff, and a secretary are under the general fund, three oh one.
Yeah. Well, you know, the thing here is just. The cost of doing business, the cost of goods, the cost of everything is, is just overrunning us. It's just overrunning us, we can't, we can't get enough money coming in. The road patrol millage, you know, I was hoping there would be. Would have funded the sheriff's department, but we. Went beyond that. We can't get any more money, there's no golden goose to lay the golden egg. It's just, it's nothing to do with operations, it's nothing, you know. Operations, operations, you could make very small changes. To the revenue, but, uh, or to the expenses, but. It's just the cost of doing business is overrunning us.
Can, can we look at, and, and I, and I forgot, I, I think I had that question last time we met. Is the overtime, that there was a line on overtime I didn't understand, cuz it was quite high. Can we go over, there's two or three separate lines for the sheriff's office, yeah. For overtime, and then the corrections overtime was still pretty high as well.
The road patrol. Two fifty-nine, the road patrol millage fund, it's, it's set at fifty thousand.
For overtime.
For overtime.
And then there was a separate one just for the sheriff's office. And I wanted to ask what that, what that, what was included in that? Can't remember what page it's on.
That's, uh, fifty-four time, twenty-five thousand.
Who's all in that twenty-five thousand?
There would be the sheriff, undersheriff, two lieutenants.
Lieutenant.
Two lieutenants?
Right, cuz you guys are salary. It would be two lieutenants and a secretary.
For twenty-five thousand?
It'd be on a real one.
That's what we had currently, we kicked it down to ten thousand, if you remember last, this, we used that, it's only two people, but. Given the nature of what they did. And the extra stuff for administration, just the way it was building it up, it was more than ten thousand, so. Based on the trends and everything, gotta cut back to twenty-five. Hopefully, that would be even less to shoot under, that would be the goal, obviously, but. Working with projections over the last couple. Twenty-five for those two. Again, for operational purposes, they do a lot of, vast majority of our mental transports. Um, so that we don't take away from road duties, um, that's just where their. Their functions, their overtime falls into.
No.
I haven't been able to.
But the FY twenty-twenty-three, this is amended budget, F, F fifty-five. We amended my budget.
Two fifty-nine. Is that what you're looking at?
On two fifty-nine, yeah, so that's not an accurate number, what we've used. Because we amended the budget. Right?
Well, we use that as a basis, we haven't finalized, although we're using the average from the previous ones of what we were at when we made the budget. And now we're over budgeting in two fifty-nine because of activities and what's going on.
Right, right.
So we're still, hopefully, we're still gunning for what we've budgeted for, which is that fifty thousand, that's what we're gonna.
But you're, we're over that, we're at fifty-five right now, Commissioner Scott?
Our amended budget is fifty-five, what was it originally?
We caught it last year.
Was forty-five.
What, what's the lieutenant, but what's the lieutenant's overtime right now? And do you have all this information?
Um, lieutenants, so they're in the three oh one.
Twenty-one, one eighty-four.
Right now?
Yeah, well, it's on July thirty-first.
Yeah.
What are we at as far as that, uh, fifty, Tim? For the.
Two fifty-nine. We were, again, it's on July thirty-one, we're at forty-six, five, twenty-four. Well, certainly, that's higher now.
That's for all the deputies?
That's for the road patrol, that's the two fifty-nine.
Okay, wasn't there one more line of overtime for the sheriff's office, or is there only two?
There is one in corrections.
Yep, seen that one. Where are we at there?
Uh, we're at fifty thousand, one forty-four.
But I think, what's, what, what is in this?
They were requesting, they're requesting seventy thousand.
I was gonna say, okay. So that's much better than it was in the past, that overtime.
Uh, that's, the goal is to set a one that's realistic, and then try to keep it, manage it so it comes underneath. By analyzing the trends and deal.
I just know it's been a very hot topic and. I didn't know, by looking at it, what that, uh. Twenty-five thousand was. Who all was part of that?
That'd be the two lieutenants. So it is two people, but we find between administrative, and obviously, it's gotten a lot better since we've got fully staffed over the road. So the lieutenants are back doing administrative. We're finally getting caught up in administrative, but they are still having to pull overtime for mental transports. We're trying to do certain functions that need to be caught up that are still behind from having them on the road for that long period of time.
That was, those are my questions. Any other questions for these guys? Thank you very much. There will be more information hopefully on Friday.
Friday, hopefully.
And I'm sure this is very difficult for you guys, so. It is for us as well. We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. So, I mean, I, 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 I think we were gonna attempt tomorrow morning to have, but I, I don't tell after Friday, we have more information, I guess. Is there anything else, Tim, you can give us?
We call it tomorrow is simply the hearing, so if there's any public that wants to have any input on the budgeting, that's, that's all you, you're obligated to do tomorrow. So, you're not proving anything.
Okay.
Um, after we're finished, uh, Friday and we take stock of what we learn. I do wanna reprint, uh, two large documents that you have, the general fund and the special fund, so you have all of the updated by-line item. Uh, I will highlight, probably like in yellow, or any changes are, should be able to see them right away and go to them. In the meantime, if you have any other thoughts, you know, I encourage you to let me know. And I'll just say this, I've had conversations, I don't, I think I've talked to just about every department now. And even though, um, in some cases, they're just ideas that they're, they're just throwing out there. Very worthwhile, and there's some that have kind of worked in our favor fairly well as we started thinking about some of the details of it. So I don't think any idea is not worthy of mentioning, it really is. Uh, and to give you just another thought, if we do end up going down the path of, uh. Housing all of our inmates in other counties. I, I don't think you want to, as policy, just have a building sitting there that's only, or holding. Uh, we are, I'm gonna ask on Friday and start the discussion if, if. It's even feasible, uh, looking at maybe doing a juvenile facility there instead of. The regular inmate, now, of course, we'd still be sending our inmates out, but we know that's a major need, uh, not only in our region, but statewide. If the building can be retrofitted to accommodate that, that's definitely worth exploring, so we'll do that. Unfortunately, it's secondary to getting this budget approved, but, um, we're gonna continue working those ideas just to, again, utilize the facility as best we can. And hopefully, uh. Be able to. Uh, make it work in terms of our balancing act with the budget.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Scott?
Well.
You look like you're deep in thought.
Well, yeah, I am, um. We've talked about the juvenile detention issue and the problem in northern Michigan, and I like this idea. Of, I've mentioned it before when I talked to the commissioner in Ross Common County a couple of years ago. Uh. Got a big enough facility. We're paying. Even for the cheapest kit, the cheapest juvenile is, is like eighty to a hundred dollars.
Well, what is it called, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, it's the, it's the bad ones, it's the violent ones and stuff, are three hundred dollars a day. You know, I mean, if we can house them closer to home. You heck of a lot cheaper. You know. I mean, um. And then everybody else has the same problem. I know we talked about Grand Travers County, and they don't have, they still don't have a facility, and they're, they're in need. Um. I would think that if, if a number of counties. Got together and found a place to put them, that the state would then. Well, I would think the state would, that would help the state make a decision that. Chuck some money toward juvenile detention. When it's multiple county. They're hesitant to do one or two counties right now. They're hesitant to give that money out because eighty-three counties, if it's only two counties at a time. Forty-two, forty-one other requests are gonna come in.
Nice thing you take this dandy prison down.
Oh, it sure would be, but, you know.
They're, they're looking at adults.
If you do somebody, yeah. Yeah, that'd be great, and we've said that for twenty years.
Yeah.
What did, what did it cost us last year, my institutional care, that's the right?
Yeah, institutional care is.
Year-to-date.
Multiple lines there.
Okay.
So state ward charge back. Is residential treatment. Um, which is two ninety, I don't, I don't know, I'll tell my head right in a second, is residential treatment. Uh, and then institutional care, hundred and twenty-five maybe?
I think, year-to-date through seven thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, the institutional care, it says only forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-five.
That's possible.
I'm just looking to see what, what this would actually save us by where we're at this year. What did you say the other line, line was called?
Yeah, un- under institutional care, you have state ward charge back, which is two ninety-two, table four, are the last three.
Okay.
Um, that's, that was the one that is residential treatments, we, we pay that money to the state, they pay first, we pay the third. Or we pay our fifty percent to them. Institutional care is, is detention, that's what you're. Talking about is, is ju- a juvenile detention facility, a short-term. Typically, free adjudication or grievance position, hold on a, on a youth. Until the court can figure out what's direction they're going.
You know, it's too bad we didn't take advantage of that collaboration for that survey that we. Turned down.
Why?
Why do you have these hard numbers now?
For our, our specific county, yeah, I'm asking why, for our specific county.
Well, it's not so many are.
The only, it's not just us, it's the, the counties around us that are gonna use us. That's another big part of what would be our numbers to try to make this work, not just our county.
What was it, eh, eh, yeah, um, I, I went to the one in Midland there and looked at it, I don't know, I first started and. If I remember right, that was individual rooms.
Well, they, they run it, uh, in addition to just detention, they also have day treatment. So they have a, a kind of a robust program there through funding from Dow, I think is how that all needs to be. Uh, we don't have Dow here, so.
Right.
So, makes that a little bit more challenging, uh, but. I was approached yesterday about, we haven't had time to look at anything yet, um, to even start. Thinking about, you know, what are the hurdles? What are the trends?
I'm just thinking as far as the facility, and the facility that I toured, there's no way possible that, and I don't mean to be a pessimist, hopefully, this, this does work out, but there's no way possible that our jail has set up. Oh, yeah. With the tripod system of how it is, could be renovated into, from what I seen, into a, a detention center.
And that's, I, I wouldn't even hazard a guess at that, because I've never looked at the requirements.
Correct.
So, we, we were, I've been putting some information together, um, and, and. I'm gonna sit down and talk about it, it's just not gonna be, that's not something that can happen quickly.
Right.
Adolescents versus adults are two totally separate.
Well, that one, physical requirements are probably coming through. But.
Yeah.
We'll know more once we dig into it.
Anything else, questions? Ideas, thoughts, comments? You have nothing to say, Commissioner Simmons?
I'm just hoping for the best in my call.
Please, right? Friday.
Friday.
Oh, today's one's, you know, maybe, by the way.
Yes, tomorrow morning. Mr. Mayhew.
Well. I don't know, if we, uh, have a jail, it is running. Change it to a juvenile jail, we're gonna spend a whole lot of money.
Well, that's what we need to find out, if it even can be.
Right.
Renovated and the cost, I.
I mean, if you can't, if we can't do what we got. She can't come up, like incentives to get people to retire, we got nothing.
Well, though, I mean, the opposite effect of that is, we're charging thirty-eight dollars a day to house an adult, if we can charge, like, we get charged to house a, a child, I mean, that's a big, you know, difference. But we have to see if it's even feasible, I mean, obviously.
And, and what is, what's it take to watch the kids?
Right, we don't know any of that.
Versus watching an adult.
Correct. There's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
But at least, at least people are thinking, and their wheels are turning. Commissioner, what's it?
Yeah, maybe we should set a point now, we're looking at every option possible, and. Be as smart as we can, and. See where, where we can head.
Commissioner Scott? So that meeting is Friday, when would you guys like to reconvene?
Up to you, I'm, I'm open.
Did you say, what did you say, Commissioner Simmons? Send me, no, 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 absolutely not. All I got is next week in the evening, that's all I, that's all I got, so.
In the evening next week.
Yep. I can do a five-thirty, I can make something work any day.
I'm open every day.
We gotta figure this out, guys. What, how much time do, I guess the question is, is to be productive, which this is everybody's time.
Tomorrow.
Pardon me?
The weeks are in the morning.
Yeah, what's it?
Oh, I'm, right, but I'm, my question is, is to gather back and actually have facts and figures and information, so we can be productive. Uh, how much time are, does everybody need? What, Tim?
I would appreciate having at least Monday to work with the sheriff and undersheriff, and digest what we learned on Friday, and, uh. Uh, update the spreadsheet, so it's the earliest Tuesday evening.
It's Tuesday or Wednesday?
Would it help to have an extra day on Tuesday?
Always, but if you want to meet Tuesday, I'll make it happen Tuesday.
Well, it's kinda like you're saying.
We wanna be productive, this is our time too.
I, I'd say Wednesday, we'd do another day and.
As much information as we can have.
You need another day?
I have no idea yet, well, it's gonna depend on what we learn on Friday.
So meeting Wednesday, does that give you enough time for anything for the meeting on Thursday?
Thursday is, I'd commit the whole, it's easier for me versus what we're doing tomorrow. And, you know, that agenda's already in process, so I don't think that's gonna be any interference.
Okay, so Wednesday, guys, five-thirty?
Yep.
Good.
Does that work?
Yeah, that sounds good, and just so we're on the same page, this is our new home, correct?
I, I don't think anybody's complained, can you hear, can you hear, okay?
You want, right?
Okay, you're okay with this setting?
This is a lot better, Roger, for hearing.
Yeah, I got something over here buzzing, but.
I'm here, we're gonna move you down there.
Tomorrow, we'll be up at the front of the room, you see, it's already set up. On the one log.
Can you guys hear us, okay? I don't think anybody's complained, Tom, has anybody complained on the, uh. Video?
Oh, I have heard no complaints.
Okay. All right, next one, say five-thirty? Oh, do I get public comment, again, yes, public comment in the room. Thank you all for coming. Public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone, motion to adjourn at six thirty-three?
Motion.
To support, adjourn.